The time is 4:00 P.M. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes? Absent. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. [Clerk] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we open up call to the public, I just wanted to make our council aware of something that was brought to my attention earlier this morning in a meeting. We last meeting discussed the Quinn building. And there is an individual that is currently considering bringing to us purchasing and rehabilitating that Quinn building. Should that go any further, it will be agendized on an upcoming agenda, but I wanted to make you aware since that conversation is out there in the public. In opening call to the public, our call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Our council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. We do have one, and it is Mr. Tom Rankin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. You already heard what I'm here to talk about. I'm talking about the telephone company building. You call it Cune Building, but where the majority of people my age and a little bit older remember that as the telephone company during World War II. That was a telephone exchange that is the only thing left here you can tell really about that a prisoner of war camp existed. We don't have it anymore. Caliente and Florence Gardens have taken that over and completely done away with it, with the exception of the main headquarters at the, uh, at Florence, or Annex. Sometimes, and I'm not a guy that lives in the past all his life. I've tried to take Florence forward. I think we've done a good job. We're doing a good job. We still got a long way to go. But you have to restore it and keep what you have. That building has a lot of memories in it for me, due to the fact my grandmother ran the telephone exchange here. She went out and collected the money from the payphones out to war camp and brought them back to town to the bar, sold them to the bars because they wanted to change. But I take a look at that building, and I looked at what was posted in the paper. Well, some fool would have spent $300,000 to redo that little building. I don't know where that estimate comes from, but somebody ought to have their head examined because that's wrong. There's no way that's gonna, that little building can, it's $300,000, there's no way. My grandfather built the back of that on to that building. And so I understand the makeup and the layout of that thing. And I was just gonna ask you to reconsider, because once it's gone, you can't redo it. You can't bring it back. Take a look at the Clark House. It's nice, isn't it, where the newspaper is? You should have seen that before it was redone. Mr. Kramer put a lot of money into doing that one. But that thing was a mess. Part of the walls were falling down and everything. You sitting on the council sometimes, you need to take a look, just not at the, and use common sense. That building's not good for anything except an office. It's not large enough to do a retail store out of it. There's not enough space to have merchandise in it. So it has to go as an office, or that's just about all it can be. And I think that's the way it's zoned. Excuse me. So I would hope that you reconsider, and I really do. I went by and looked at it today. The roof's, the roof's in pretty bad shape. It's gonna have the new roof. Take a look what the roof's made out of, two by fours and ten. Now, where you get $300,000 there. Build a new adobe. If you built that thing brand-new with adobe, your majority of your cost is gonna probably be close to probably $60,000. There's no building in Florence on Main Street right now, with the exception of one or two, maybe, worth $300,000. So how do you expect that to be worth $300,000? I think staff led you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else this evening that would like to speak? All right. We are closing call to the public. Our next agenda item is discussion with Penile County Board Supervisor, Mr. Mike Goodman.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to introduce Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and our supervisor for District Two, Mr. Mike Goodman. For any of you that don't know Mr. Goodman, he's been in Penile County for a long time. He's the newest member of the Board of Supervisors and was elected in January of 2017. He represents Santan Valley and as far south as Anthem. He's spent a 30-year career as an insurance broker statewide in Arizona, and has owned a whole litany of small businesses, including being a farmer in Santan Valley. The chairman reached out to staff some time ago and requested that we have a public meeting where he's able to address the council. It's my understanding that he's done the same with Queen Creek. So I give you Mr. Goodman.
Hate to bring my grandkids with me next time. They can help me out with this technology. Besides that, I'm old. You get to let, I get to sit down. I appreciate that. Thank you. You know, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think there was a, and being able to have all of you at the same time and to introduce myself formally. Some of you do know me outside of our, of our elected positions that we hold. I was looking earlier at some of the signs here. Many of you may not know, but my dad and his family, the Goodman family, moved from the St. David area when he was in third grade to Florence. And my grand, my dad was a graduate of, he's a gopher, as well as many of my other aunts and uncles. And so there's kind of a tie here for me with the Florence area when it comes to some of my heritage. And so when Mr. Rankin came up and talked about preserving some of the buildings and things that you're doing, you've got such a great legacy here, I think, that you can preserve and do, and you've done a fine well, a good job doing that. One of the things that, since I've been in this position, is I've started to recognize the need for some intergovernment type agreements, or not necessarily agreements, but coalition of efforts being combined and working together in some of our efforts. And so we began that process with Queen Creek here about a year ago, and we've got some things that are moving forward in a pretty good direction. Meridian Road, for one, that has been a combined effort there to even take that particular road all the way to the 24. And so we've got things moving in that direction, as well as with the city of Mesa and Apache Junction. And so seeing the need for us to do the same thing here with the town hall, I wanted to come and introduce myself and see if we can formally set up some kind of meetings on a regular basis where members of our staff, and particularly from Public Works, and even from our planning and zoning department, where we have meetings with maybe two or three of you, council members, at different intervals. Not necessarily we need to do it in this type of a meeting, but where we can do it outside of this type of a meeting, and along with your city manager and some of your staff members, and kind of correlate our efforts. I know our staff are actually working very well together on various projects, and I really appreciate that. But I think as you, as elected officials, and myself, and the other four of us, as we, as elected officials who's supposed to be guiding these ships, is we work together and get on the same page, so to speak, or at least look at some of the differences that we have and try to find some common ground in some of the development things that we're going, we could help one another move things in the direction that we need to and that we would like to see happen. I appreciate the opportunity to serve in my capacity, my constituents and their confidence that they had in me when they, they may not have that in a couple of years, but right now they have the confidence still. But, and that remains, it comes election time, but thank you for allowing me to come here. And I don't know if that's possible, but I will work with your staff to be able to sit down and try to look at some of the common projects or things where we kind of overlap with one another. And so that's really what I'm here before you, is just asking that we might do that in the future. And so we do that with Queen Creek. We're gonna reach out to Apache Junction. Their city limits are right next to my county, where my district is, and so we're gonna be doing the same thing with them as well. Okay? If you have any questions of me, I don't know if this is the setting. Can we do that right now? All right? All right? Is there any questions that you have of me that you might want to ask?
Open it up to council first. I see Councilmember Wall has a question.
You may not know that several of the council members in Florence are residents in Anthem, which is part of, or area. So this question is kind of close to my heart, and I'm not sure about others, but I'd like to get your perspective on the progress that has been made so far by Epcor.
I am going to be at the Corporation Commission tomorrow to actually speak in regards to that. My position personally, and I believe with the rest of the board members, is that we've been very well pleased with the efforts made by Epcor. There's a lot of work to be done, a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. One of the things that I think we as citizens need to be more engaged on some of the processes and the things that are moving forward, I think that we need to, yeah, the citizens themselves came out pretty good whenever the ACC and ADQ came to those three, or those two days of hearings back in February of 2000, or just a year ago. And it was an overwhelming venue that took place there that motivated the ACC to move forward with some processes. I met, we met with the ACC and ADQ a couple of days ago, staff and myself, and talked about some of the things that were going on with Epcor and with Johnson Utilities and some of the other, the mix and the legality of everything. Being new to government, it's frustrating to me. Whenever, we so desperately need things to move forward, but I also recognize that there, this whole gamma of everything is pretty complex. And unfortunately, it's governing agencies that, in my opinion, allowed things to happen over the years and didn't tend to business like they should. And that's one of the reasons why I felt, that's one of the reasons why I ran, is looking at some of the things that are kind of out of sorts, that need some help to give it some direction, and that's one thing that we can do. So I'm very confident with Epcor and what they're doing. I think their, I think their hands are tied to a degree on what they can and can't do. And so those are some things that I want to go and present to the ACC tomorrow and talk about those things, and just present my point of view on some of the things moving forward and how they could actually help the Epcor be able to do the job that they were warranted to do. So I don't know if that answers your question, it helps? Okay.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Back to your original purpose of being here tonight, just to set up some kind of working relationship with the town. So how do we do that? I mean, what's?
You know, we, we, my office usually coordinates quarterly meetings with, with you. That's what we, that's kind of my envision, is that we would establish quarterly meetings with you and your staff, and obviously, you know, a certain amount of members. And we kind of did it in interview, in intervals with Queen Creek where a group came in, maybe two or three, and then another group came in. Never where it was a quorum, but if there was ever a need to do it in this type of setting. I don't believe there's a need to do it in this type of setting unless you choose to do that. But it's more of a discussion on, on some of the background information that we're looking at, to where we're working together on some of the projects, like road constructions, how we can help one another out in those areas, all the way down to some of the planning and zoning issues, new developments that are coming in. One of the things I'd love to see us work really strongly together and jointly is the economic development that we all so desperately, in my opinion, that we need and that we need to bring to this area. We need employment centers. And I think if we work together between the county and the, and the, and the town, I think we can accomplish those tasks. I know, I, you know, I think Supervisor Reels has a really good relationship with you guys, and that's, that's one of the things that I'm desiring to do as well. So I don't know if that helps. Councilman Anderson?
I guess, question for the city manager. How do we do this?
Not a problem. We do meet constantly with the different departments of the county, and the county manager and I, and the assistant county manager and I talk every week. So a lot of that is ongoing. But if we want to set up a quarterly meeting, I would propose that the mayor choose perhaps a member of council to participate. We can work with the county staff. I'll work particularly with Greg Stanley. And we can set an agenda on some key projects to, to report before the supervisor and a couple of our staff people, and clearly the county manager, and get that group together. So there are a number of things right now that I'm, that I'm thinking about that we're working with, with the county that, we could have an agenda next week if we wanted and talk about those things. As a matter of fact, we just had a joint economic development meeting two weeks ago. So.
Got to do that, then. Go for it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Cortez?
So I too am new to government, as you know. We've met before, and we talked about my issues are still pretty much the same. My concerns are with Johnson Utilities. And even with Epcor taking over, I personally still experience issues, and I've reported them. I'm concerned about rate increases. You know, we're already struggling, and a lot of our community members, including those in Anthem, contrary to belief, struggle as well, because we have retired people that are on fixed incomes. So I'm really nervous about a rate increase. I'm nervous about with new development coming into our area specifically, that the infrastructure that Johnson Utility, Johnson Utilities currently has can handle that. We brought that up at one of our last council meetings with the D.R. Horton, is, you know, can it handle those new houses on top of what we already have? We already have low water pressure, debris in our water, and things like that. And then my other, it's not a concern, but it, you know, it kind of all goes together, is Santan's plans of incorporation. And just what I have heard from people that are in the unincorporated section of Florence, which would be Wild Horse Estates and Crestfield Manor, and just other areas that I've talked to that are concerned because it seems to be a big secret, and that there's a new map out. And everybody's very concerned because there are areas that, that haven't, they feel like they haven't been represented well. So I, I'm concerned about those areas and wanting to make sure that when Santan moves forward with their incorporation, that they're also taking into consideration the residents and how they're gonna affect them, the commercial area, how they, that affects not just Santan, but how it affects Florence as well, because I suspect that part of that area that will get incorporated or attempt to be incorporated will be part of Florence's unincorporated sections. So those are kind of my concerns, and I love to talk about it. So anytime you want to put me on that, I'd love to go and sit and talk.
That'd be good. You know, your concerns are, I believe, are across the board. Anywhere that Johnson Utilities is currently of service or providing services, there is a concern for rate increases. The, the Corporation Commission pulled back the rate case and allowed a year's worth of, this next year, with some of the improvements and everything, to be included in the next rate case. However, looking at what Epcor's doing, and this is one of the things that, that I want to speak to, is that, how is, how is this all gonna be at the end of the, at the, when it's all said and done? How is it gonna be? I do know for a fact that Epcor is working on a general plan for the whole entire system. And they anticipate to be done with that in the next 90 days. And that was per our discussion with them a couple of days ago. And they've been working on that since they were assigned and put in there as interim manager. Was an overall general plan for the entire Johnson Utility systems. But in the meantime, they, they have some patchwork that has to be done, and that's what they're doing. Right now, there's, there's plenty of funds in this, in Johnson Utilities that allow them to do that. And so there's monies that are set aside to do all the things that they're doing right now. To do it on a bigger scale is going to require some investment. And so that's, that should be a concern of, as the citizens that are, or the ratepayers that are on that. That should be a concern of theirs. And that's where ratepayers can actually get involved in the process and be a part of that. Representative Tobin has put himself out there. You know, when they were here before, they said they would come back. And Representative Commissioner Tobin has, has made it, is, we're putting together a schedule now to where he can come back and, and come before the citizens out here and be able to give a report as to where the Corporation Commission is, and then even take some of the concerns that you're talking about, and even hear from the public. And as those dates get closer, or as we actually finalize those dates, we make sure, we'll make sure that those get communicated to, out, out in the public, because I think they need to come out again and express in some of the concerns that you're, you're talking about, Councilmember Cortez. And so, you, these are things that we need to stay ahead of the forefront. We don't need to, let's not put them back behind us. We need to stay ahead of the game here, so that we make sure and assure that changes are made, and that they're, they're good changes that we are comfortable with, and that, and so your voices are gonna be heard. So I don't know if that helps in some of what you're, what you're talking about, but they're, they're, they're wanting to come out here and be a part of this and listen, they promised they would, and so they're gonna do that.
Now, and along the lines with what Councilmember Cortez just brought up, in speaking to the Santan Valley incorporation, something that I wanted to bring forward is, a lot of our planning area and a lot of the roads that are already within, that are within the town of Florence, are serviced out there. So just to be cognizant in regards to, if that land is brought in, we also need to look at the roads, because it wouldn't be fair to our taxpayers to be paying for road maintenance if another area were to be incorporated, so to open up that dialogue as well.
Just so you know, I personally have not anything to do with any kind of incorporation effort, and neither does the county. And I'm not aware of any map or secret map that's out there. Now, that doesn't mean that nothing's gonna be done without my knowledge, okay? And so, but I'm telling you that I'm not aware of anything that's going forward. Now, when we, when we did the Plan Santan, when the county paid for, and we have now this Plan Santan, that we, myself, my office is actually, we formally put out a proposal for individuals that wanted to be on a committee to evaluate and look at some of the items that are on that Plan Santan, amenities that individual, that community wanted. And so we're looking, that's what this committee's doing, is looking at the alternatives, what we can and can't do to provide some of those amenities. And so those are some things, like, for instance, ball fields. That was something that was greatly, I mean, it was overwhelmingly the amount of individuals that are, these ball fields, we just don't have enough. And so we're actually doing some things, trying to look at some alternatives, and even have some things working in place with the Florence School District to be able to put some ball fields in. Another one is a public library. We're looking at some resources there, and, and what we can do to provide a public library for the people in the Santan Valley area. We're getting closer to that. And that's what this committee is tasked with, is trying to help us find the ways to be able to push things forward, even though we're not incorporated, but find a way that help us move things forward in what the community as a whole is desiring. Now.
Do you have any youth that serve on your committee?
I do. We have, we have, we started with four, the four high schools that are in our, in my district, we started with those high schools, and we pulled from their student body, and we pulled together a youth advisory committee. And so we've been meeting with them periodically during the course of last year, and then this year we began, and then there were some things that got in the way, but they're, because of schedule conflicts, but they're still that group that's moving forward on some different projects. One of them, they were wanting to do a talent show for the whole entire community, and put together a talent show, and so, but there's some other things that they're working on. One of the things that they want to do is a complete cleanup for certain areas out there, and so they're working on some of that as well. But yes, we have the youth in those four high schools, the student body that's working with us on some items, so.
Great. And if memory serves correct, you also pulled a few of our K-8 kiddos as well.
We did. We did. The class president is who we pulled in there to help us.
All right. And then one more question, just going back to infrastructure, that I haven't had a chance to talk to you about, but in regards to the improvements that are happening, the widening on Hunt Highway, how far down are we looking to bring that?
Right now, we are in design to Magma, and, and they're actually working on the design to come farther down the road there. There was some issues that involved with the tribe and the property there, so we're gonna have to realign Hunt Highway and actually bolt over and come over where the state land is, and kind of come out of alignment a little bit. Kind of like what Jermaine wrote, or Rittenhouse, how it actually deviates on Jermaine, and then it comes back around and ties back into Rittenhouse. Something very similar is what we're gonna have to do because of some of the agreements we couldn't do with the tribe, and so, but that's in design, and I, I'm not for sure. I think we can get you an update. Are you familiar with the update?
Absolutely. Ben and I were just at a meeting two weeks ago at Public Works, and they provided us a copy of the concept plan to realign, but there's still gonna be a ways from the town of Florence.
Now, in regards, have they looked up towards that Magma, not Magma Ranch, Magic Ranch subdivision? Because a lot of our residents in Florence, when they're traveling to work via Hunt Highway, a lot of times that area is flooded out. So do, are there plans to redesign and widen that?
After last year, I just know from knowledge, from talking to the county, there was a period where the road had to be closed, et cetera. The county was looking at a drainage design at that time as, as part of trying to mitigate some of that, but I don't have an update on that specific project.
Okay.
See, and these are items that, you know, as, and I'll meet with our Public Works as well to see where those are in, in, in the coffer, so to speak, to see where, at what point, because, you know, we, we have other projects that we're working on, but as funds become available, those are maybe some items that could be moved up and put on, on, on the agenda to be able to get done. And so as we work together and we talk about these things openly, quite honestly, some of these things, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that get done that we're not aware of as supervisors and council members, because they're just going about and doing their jobs. and doing their jobs and getting things done. And so this, this is one of the reasons why I think it'd be helpful if we meet regularly on a quarterly basis and not only keeps us informed, but it keeps them in check as well. Maybe they don't wear a bright shirt like this one right here.
Councilmember Larson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say first of all, thank you for being here. And then I was just thinking about economic development and how that, from the county's perspective, what they can control and what they can't control. And I thought about how the county as an employer, a lot of town residents here work for the county. So there's something that you could have control over and I hope and I want to implore you to analyze during this next budget season, is your employing compensation and benefits package, because I know that that affects a lot of our citizens. And this last time when they had a 2.5% increase, I believe it was, if I remember correctly, although they were happy to have an increase, that over the recession, there was, you know, obviously there was a lot of freezes and a lot of people who didn't go with any increase at all. So it'd be nice to have some type of incentive or jumps going forward and especially if you have extra income that you're wondering where you could prioritize that. It would definitely help us out here as the town, as well as the whole region for us to have that money trickle down into our local economies.
You bet. Well, definitely, I promise that that's an area that I'll look at. Even in the past, we've looked at those and as our funds have been available to us, we've done that. One thing that, for instance, our employee benefits, I don't, we didn't give, we didn't pass on any increase to the employees last year. We didn't employ it the year before. We didn't pass that on. And I think the year before, we got about a 2, 2.5% rate increase, but the county was able to absorb that. So that is in a form of a raise, in my opinion. Even last year, I think we had a 2% increase and we still absorbed that. This year, it looks like our poll's running fairly well, from what my understanding is, and there may not be any increase. So therefore, we may be able to do some of the things that, as we look at this and we analyze this, this may be some of the options that you're making. So yeah, we'll look at those things as we're moving forward. Totally get, the fact is, is that for years, several years there, we were not able to give an increase because of the downfall. And we're not the only ones that was in that same situation. I think all governing agencies out there were in the same boat. And so if we can make up that difference, we'll work at it. That's a prom, that's a promise.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Well, I do want to say thank you again for coming this evening.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
And we look forward to making this regular.
Can I talk to you about a couple of things?
All right. This is our second call to the public, opening call to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Cortez? I do hope you'll share about the 16th.
Yes. So for those that don't know, this weekend is our Say Yes to Prom, Say Yes to Prom event. It is a free event for all high school students. They can come, they just have to have their student ID with them. We have well over 300 dresses to pick from and they are free. You don't have to pay anything. You don't have to return it when you're done with it. We do have shoes and we have some jewelry that, those are the donations that are harder to get, so there's no guarantee on those items. It is a great event. It's grown every year. This will be, I think my, I want to say fourth, but I feel like it's my fifth year that I've been doing this. And I do it with Florence Unified School District, but it's for all of Penal County students. And last year, we served, over 30 students came and got dresses. We also outfitted, because occasionally I get wedding dresses as well. We outfitted two brides. We outfitted a quinceañera. So if you come or you have a need and you can't come to the event, please, please, please contact me because I can still help you even if you can't come to the event. I have some guys' stuff, not a lot, because that again, guys don't seem to change their clothes as often as girls do. They'll, they'll wear the same shirt 100 times where we wear the dress once and then we get rid of it. So I don't have as much for boys, but I do have some stuff. I do have probably 15 pairs of shoes, very nice custom Italian-made shoes that were given to me. I'm supported through other community members and businesses, Buxford Styles, Sunrisa Insurance. Of course, my, my real estate partner Danny Miller and I both do a lot, my husband, and just other people throughout the community. I did get a large donation from the Cinderella Fair, which is the same type of event. It's in Chandler. And so she also gave me a large donation of dresses and we've built a relationship that'll continue to grow as well. So I'm excited to see everybody on Saturday. It's 11 to 3 at the community, the Community Ed Building, and I always forget what school that is right there.
Walker Butte?
Walker Butte, yeah, next to Walker Butte where the STEM Prep Academy is, in the cafeteria. So just come down and just bring your ID with you and we will be happy to help you find a beautiful dress.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
I just want to say that's great. That's fantastic. If I, yeah, that's the same day as a rummage sale, so I'll be having my rummage sale that day, so I won't be able to make it up there. But I hope people come out and I hope you have a great turnout. That is fantastic. I don't really personally have anything, so I'm good tonight.
Councilmember Wall? Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, I just want people to know on the Ken Building, we don't have morons getting our information. We've got commercial contractors and commercial architects. We're not throwing numbers out there, you know, nilly willy. I mean, we know what we're doing. We're doing it very, as professional as we can and within the law. And so, you know, I just want all of our citizens to know that we're on top of it and that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Well, I'd like to just thank Councilman Hawkins for what he said. I think that's so true and I'm so proud of Councilwoman Cortez for what she's doing. And it makes me proud to be a part of this council for all the work that we do. So thank you, folks.
All right. Thank you.
Could I be excused for...
Yes, you may. All right. I just want to close with, we are on spring break. For those of you who do need childcare, the town of Florence does have a phenomenal program that they're running over at the community center. You can sign up online. Otherwise, I hope everybody has a safe and sound spring break. And with that, we are going to adjourn to executive session for a few items, but we will come out to adjourn from public. With that, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.